indicated me that they would not be in attendance. Mr. Magrino?
Here.
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Ms. Corable?
Here.
Mr. Waldinger?
Here.
First, order of business and nomination election of a chairperson for 2025.
I'd like to nominate Jeff Mills as chairperson for the 2025 year of the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd also like to nominate Rocco Magrino as the vice chair for 2025 Planning Commission.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to nominate Mr. David Wiley for the designation of alternate signee of Platts.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Establishing the regular meeting date and time in 2024 was held the second Thursday each month at 7:00 PM. Do we have, do we have to formally nominate or approve that?
It's always just been on the lists. I mean, you could change it. The only meeting that was actually scheduled for this year was the reorganization, here was the reorganization, regular meetings. So you could change it, but...
I have no interest in changing it.
No, it works. Let's keep it.
All in favor?
Aye.
The established special meeting day to be the fourth Thursday of the month at 7:00 PM in 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We then have Planning Commission appointment to the Traffic Calming Committee. I would like to nominate Commissioner Wiley.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I believe that closes our reorganization meeting. Moving on to our regular meeting. Do you want to do another roll call since there's no adjustment?
Sure. Mr. Carl Phyllis, Mr. Mills, and Mr. Slup is previously indicated me that they would not be in attendance. Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Mr. Magrino?
Here.
Ms. Corable?
Here.
Mr. Waldinger?
Here.
We have a motion to approve the November 14th, 2024 regular meeting minute. There was no meeting in December.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 14th, 2024.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there any public comment for items that are not on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to old business. Cohen Market Site Plan?
Before any, you have the Cohen Market Site Plan. This is an item, returning item. We've reviewed it twice here at the Planning Commission. There's been a number of changes since it was initially seen by the Planning Commission, including a change in the size of the store, some other minor changes to the parking area, as well as approval of their special exception for the fifth gas pump. Now with that said, there's still a few minor items that we need to have addressed by the consultant. However, I will note that the consultant is in attendance and would like to request both an extension of time as well as tabling of the plan. And he's here in the audience to...
Much closer.
Give his due sense.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Chris Peters. I'm with MDM, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant Cohen Markets. Just to ask for tabling and an extension and some additional time, we'd like to come back and be 100% in compliance with the ordinance. There are a couple of housekeeping items that were on the last reviews, which in my experience have not been enough to hold up an approval, but the applicant wants to be 100% and would like time for their lighting vendor to get everything finished. So...
Okay. I'm going to take any public comment related to this item. Do the commissioners have any commentary related to this? I don't see any issue with table and an extension which I have here to be granted.
I don't either. Just if anybody's here to comment, I like to hear from the public if anybody's here for that.
Hearing none, moving motion. Two motions, one to table and the second for the approval of the 90-day?
Correct.
First motion will be on, well, actually may have a motion.
I'll make a motion to table the Cohen Market Site Plan.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion that we grant an extension. Is it 90-day? Is that the primitive time?
Aye, it's, they have in there, I believe, till March 14th, which gives us one additional, well, actually technically two meetings.
Yeah, meeting mission. Yep. And we would like to get the lighting plan fully compliant and provide text backup to all of the comments rather than just presenting it here at the meeting and have that to the township with enough time for Mark to review.
I'll stick with my motion to grant the extension.
Moving motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brings us to our next item of new business. That would be Courtyards at Valley Brook Final Plan.
This is a, another plan that we've seen before the Planning Commission. Initially, back in the early fall, or sorry, early spring this year, they received, they submitted a plan for preliminary approval for 12 townhome units. They received that approval from the township, and the applicant is now here seeking final approval for the land development plan. Since you last seen it, it has largely stayed the same. There is a handful of revisions that were made, but those were based on our preliminary, our comments from our preliminary approval, some of the conditions that were contained there, as well as recently, some revisions were made based on the more recent comments that we had with the final plan. But there are still a handful of very minor issues that need to be resolved. Just to kind of walk through the plan again, like I said, it's largely the same. Still 12 townhomes. They're still in the same layout. Each one is going to be served by a private street that leads to each unit having its own driveway and garage. That private drive, or that private street has access out to Valley Brook Road at two points. This, let's see if I can get it here. Here, here. This particular intersection is a full movement intersection. This one on the more easterly portion of the site is a limited movement. Basically, you're only allowed to do a right out from the site. And some other items to note, there is a landscape buffer along Valley Brook Road separating it from, separating the homes from the Valley Brook Road. And there's also a sidewalk and path that lead up to the bike path, which is located to the, I guess that'd be the south of the site here. There are two notable items that are remaining. One would be providing a street light at the entrance to Valley Brook from the development itself, as well as showing easements as necessary for, for the sewer authority for maintenance of any of the sewage facilities shown on the site. We have a recommended action, and that is to, for the Planning Commission to recommend to council to additionally approve the plan. And there's a list of eight or so conditions, which for the most part are just addressing the comments in the letters that you have in your packets from both PTSA, TPD, gateway engineers, and township staff, as well as also obtain permits from outside agencies such as Penda. The applicant is here, and they do have a presentation that they would like to provide to Planning Commission if you'd like.
Yes. Good evening. Mike Wetzel with Victor Wetzel Associates. We're here tonight with Tom Robinson, property owner, as well as Paul Star Mazie, who would be the builder. And really, if you just wanted to put up the one slide, you know, Mark kind of explained everything in regard to the plan. Plan is very much identical to what was approved earlier in the preliminary plan. We have the overall, overall site area of 6.7 acres in size, and really, you know, the plan still provides a large amount of open space within, within the plan. Just under five acres of open space overall. Just one item to continually note, all of the units along and through here will be a maintenance-free type of community, so no, no grass cutting, no lawn mowing, no leaf and snow removal. That'll all be done, especially even with the maintenance of the private street that will take place. So really, what we're here tonight is seeking the Planning Commission's recommendation for the final plan for Courtyards of Valley Brook Road.
Did you have any issues, Mike, with the lighting request at the intersection to Valley Brook Road? I saw that as a comment from staff, as well as the easements for sanitary sewer throughout the project.
Well, it's kind of the first, well, there was a comment of adding, adding lights to the, the intersection. In our initial review, we did provide a response that we do have existing traffic lights that occur right over and through here through this section, but if it's going to be a requirement of staff...
Where is the existing?
There's an existing overhead Cobra light right here.
Okay.
And through this section, which I think will be more enough to handle the, the intersection.
Yeah, I guess that would be fine, but what about to the west there, the full turn?
This one through?
That's the one I'm more concerned about.
Yeah. In the past, we have never provided light fixtures at that location, but if that's going to be a requirement of staff, we'll need to have.
It helps light, I mean, that's a very dark section of the road. From a safety perspective, that'd be ideal. So...
Net entrance on the east, that's a right in and right out, correct?
Yes, that's a full intersection right there.
So lefts are allowed to come in there too?
Yes, correct.
Okay. That's, I think, why you're suggesting lighting. I don't know if we require a photometric plan. I don't believe so.
We don't require a photometric plan. The way the ordinance, it's actually a policy, not even a ordinance. It just says that the entrance has to have a street light.
And we did provide a photometric plan because we do have a light fixture right over here where the CPU is, and we complied with all the requirements of that.
Yep.
So that'd be lighting just to the west intersection.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, I wasn't aware there was one to the east there.
Yeah, I'll show you some of the information if you're driving by.
I'll be driving by tonight, so...
It is, it is a dark area. It really is.
Nope, that's it. We figure we've been through this plan quite a bit, and like I says, through Mark's comments, we're, we're just here. We agree with finalizing all of the necessary engineering comments, and we look forward to moving forward with the recommendation and saving plan approval.
Understood.
I will also note that Mike Mudry, the traffic engineer, has reviewed the latest version and your responses to those comments that we had, and is in concurrence that he has essentially no more comments.
Understood. I did see that he did review the geometry of the right out only entrance and found that to be sufficient.
Yep.
Would that require a PINOP for that particular?
Yes.
So they'll be reviewing it as, that was in the...
And in fact, that's one of the conditions. If we go back here, I can get those conditions up.
And...
These are the conditions right here. I think there's eight.
There was eight in any other one, which I think we added two, which are the two above, correct? Site lighting at the western entrance to Valley Brook Road, and then provide easements necessary for maintenance of sewage facilities.
Right.
So there's a total of 10. Any audience comments on this particular project? Hearing none, any commissioner comments relative to it?
All of the conditions that are listed here, you don't see any issues?
No issues, and we accept. Yes, we agree with them.
Including the lighting?
Yes, like I says, we, we understand because we've gone kind of back and forth, but we agree that we'll put a, a light fixture at the full intersection.
Okay.
Are there any parameters as far as what kind of light fixture, things like that? Or is that something you guys will continue to look?
We do have some parameters. Basically, just a standard Cobra head would be what we'd be looking for, but if you want to do something else, we can discuss that as well.
Yeah, and what we can do is we do have a, a light fixture that we have at our CPU. Let's see if we might be able to match that type of light.
Right. Yeah, we can work with the development.
It's going to provide a nice entrance feature for the development to kind of pull people in, so if you have something more sophisticated or something more specific to the project, if your staff's okay with it.
One of the nice things about lighting intersections is it makes it easier than to find your entrance to the site itself as well.
If there's no commissioner comments, we may have a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. Motion is that the Planning Commission recommend the Courtyards of Valley Brook Road final land development with the 10 conditions listed on the plan.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Next order of business would be the Woodbrier Estates Development Final Plan.
This too is also another plan that's been before the Planning Commission. Previously, you had received and reviewed a preliminary plan for the site. This plan was ultimately approved, this preliminary plan was ultimately approved for the Woodbrier Estates by council. Applicant is now here currently seeking an approval, or actually really a recommendation of approval to council for the final subdivision plan for the development. Since we last seen this plan, I will note there were some, there was a lawsuit that resulted from the approval of the plan. The applicant has now begun settlement negotiations regarding that, and that's pretty much wrapped up as we understand it. And all that has to do with just some additional buffering, as well as a couple of notes on the plan. In addition to that, they have made a few revisions to the plan to address some of the conditions of the previous approval of the preliminary plan. But we still do have a number of technical issues that we need to work out, as well as some minor planning requirements that need to be addressed. So taking a look at the plan itself, again, this is pretty similar. It's almost identical really to what you've seen previously. 52 single-family lots are proposed. The sizes range from about a third of an acre to almost a half an acre. They're all situated along three new roads and the extension of one existing road. That extension of that road runs, it's called Wildbrier, and it runs from the currently cul-de-sac, Wildbrier here in this adjoining development. And the primary entrance is off of Venetia here with Penelope Court intersecting with Venetia. Couple other items to note, things that have changed since you last saw it. There are some slightly larger lots on what is the east side or the upper part of the screen here. These lots have been enlarged by a few feet in terms of being a little bit deeper. And also, since you last seen it, this plan has turned from a single-phase to a two-phase project, and that second phase is located approximately, well, not approximately, right here. They are proposing to do these three lots at a later date in the development.
Can you say where again? I'm sorry, I missed it when you...
Right here at the intersection of Carmen and Luca, there's, this hatched-out area is considered Phase Two, and that, those will be acted upon at a later date. And that has to do with the presence of a wetland there that they need to mitigate, and that'll be part of the first phase. They'll start the mitigation, and then they'll come back when it's mitigated and do Phase Two for those three lots. Again, as I noted, there's a number of issues that staff has found on the plans itself. Our traffic engineer would like to see some revisions to the vertical curvature along Penelope, Luca, and Wildbrier Drive. Basically, there's some issues with the, basically the changing of the slope as you go down the hill. There's also required street light again at the intersection of Venetia Road. I need to get them to confirm with the fire hydrant, or with the fire chief that some of the fire hydrant locations, which I think he needs to still review. There's also a handful of geotechnical items that need to be addressed, and as well as provide some stormwater and ENS requirements. And then there's a buffer area that needs to be addressed as well. So with that said, these are addressable items that need to be worked on, but they're not on the plan yet. So we'd like to see Planning Commission table this so that we could have a later date, probably at the next meeting, which we have time for, see a plan with those revisions in place, so that you guys can then act on that. The applicant is here in the audience. If you'd like to either address us or answer any questions?
Do you know if there's an objection to the table?
What's that?
Is there any objection to it being tabled? Do you know?
I don't have any objection to it.
No, no, because the applicant has an objection.
No.
When does the 90-day clock run out?
The 90-day clock on this one is March 12th, I believe. So, so the, that means plan, council can act upon it in March. There's, I think it's March 10th is the next council meeting in March, the first council meeting.
We'd have to act upon it in February.
So we'd have to act upon it in February, correct.
Sir? Yes, good evening. John Schleicher with JMS Engineering. I think Mark did a pretty thorough job in presenting the, the final plan and in comparison to the preliminary plan, which as, as Mark indicated, it's, it's pretty much identical. We did tweak a, a few of the lot areas just based on some feedback from the township in general, Planning Commission and council to accommodate larger, larger product on them. There's a lot coverage, maximum lot coverage requirement in the code, so we wanted to make sure that we weren't coming back for, you know, revision or variance or something to build the houses. So just some housekeeping items in that regard. And then in addition, we, we do have the, the planning, planning staff's review. We do have the gateway engineers' review, and we have your traffic engineers' review, all pretty minor and technical items. There are some, some traffic items we want to go through with, with Mr. Mudry, and we tentatively have a meeting scheduled for, for Tuesday morning to, to go through those, but none of the, I, I don't anticipate any of these revisions affecting the material design of the, of the development. As Mr. Holdren indicated, some of the questions were more with vertical, you know, profiles and so forth, so it wouldn't affect, again, any, any plan setbacks, dimensional type things like that. So, so with that being said, we are agreeable to, to the plan being tabled, but did want to get any, any feedback or questions or comments from, from the Planning Commission to incorporate, incorporate into those revisions as necessary.
Chris Schleicher, would you mind if we take public comment and then do commissioner comments if there's any thereafter?
Excellent.
Very good. Any public comment? Anyone like to speak on this topic? Yes, sir. Please come up, state who you are and your address, please.
My name, my name is Ed Gunna. I live at 112 Wildbrier Drive, my wife, Rosemary. Live in the cul-de-sac, at the end of the cul-de-sac that's going to join the northern entrance of the extending Wildbrier Drive. Just to indicate the importance that we're assigning to this meeting tonight, we're missing a, my granddaughter's basketball game and my grandson's high school hockey game to be here. So we do think this is important. We're assuming the development's going to be ultimately moving ahead, but we just, my wife and I wanted to be sure to try to confirm three issues associated with the transition. First of all, we talked in, in, at length with Paul Lauer over the course of the past couple of months, and we have come to the conclusion that we would like to eliminate that cul-de-sac turnaround instead of just tapping into it. And Paul said he thought that was a, you know, was an appropriate option. In the course of eliminating it, one of the main reasons is it's, the cul-de-sac is only about 28 feet from our front porch. And we thought the volume of traffic and from an aesthetic standpoint, that's really not a whole lot of space, even from a safety standpoint, to have a highway, cars traveling, you know, that close to the house. So we thought it would be good just to eliminate the cul-de-sac and just have, you know, straight, street run-through. And it was our, our assumption that the contractor would be responsible for costs associated with doing that in terms of taking out the asphalt in the current turnaround area, planting grass, and doing whatever restorative landscaping is required when the cul-de-sac is eliminated. Secondly, they're currently, we currently have two sump pumps installed and sump pump drain pipes, one of which drains onto the cul-de-sac, the other one drains right beyond the cul-de-sac. And it's very important that these be addressed properly, and we're assuming that the contractor will extend the drain pipes, you know, from where they are now out onto the, onto the street, because we had some severe, we put those sump pumps and drains in about 10 years ago.
They're for your home, sir?
They're for our home, yes. And we, we had them installed because we had a major water problem in the house. Cost us several thousand dollars to remediate our finished basement, carpeting, drywall, and so forth. We didn't want that to happen again, and the sump pumps are absolutely critical to prevent that. So we wanted to make sure whenever that cul-de-sac was removed, that the drains are, you know, attacked appropriately and so that the, you know, water isn't, doesn't back up into the house. And third, which is kind of a minor item, but it's very important, especially to my wife, Lot 121 on the plan is essentially right next to our house. There's just a few feet between our, our house. We're sort of on the end of the lot and Lot 121. And we were concerned and expressed our concern at, at the council meeting last time about the loss of privacy. And it was mentioned at that time that some trees and shrubs and so forth could be put in between our property line and the new development, Lot 121. We see there were some of those tree barriers in other areas, but there were none, you know, in our area. And we just wanted to make sure to see if the contractor would do the appropriate, you know, shrub tree protection between our, our lot and Lot 121. Again, there was nothing on the drawing right now, as it stands now, to indicate that that was going to take place.
Understood.
Okay, and one final item. It's not, not related to the, the contract, I don't think. It's more related to the township. We were recently, recently were made aware that the existing road, the, our Wildbrier Drive, was not top coated, that it's, it's just, it was a preliminary or the first, first coating of asphalt. And we thought that if, if in fact that's the case, and it was a township person that mentioned it to us, we thought it would be good if the township planned to, when they're doing the rest of the area, just to put a, a top coat and finish it off so, so it looks nice, so it's all, you know, one, you know, clean area. And again, that's, I didn't think that was a contractor issue, but probably more of a township issue, and perhaps should be raised to them.
I appreciate that, sir.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Any additional public comment? Sir?
Neil Mickens, 109 Autumn Way, 324 Venetia Road, both addresses. My question is more regarding the Phase Two and what is, what you're thinking is going to happen with Phase Two. I, I think I'm noticing that down in here becomes a Phase Two as well as Phase Two. If I look at it correctly, is this part of a Phase Two here and here? Because I think the drawing says Phase Two.
Mr. Schleicher, could you come up?
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna...
I'll sit down if you want to.
No, no, we're both standing there.
I was gonna just wait to be called. I didn't know if we were going to address item by item. So yeah, the, the only reference to a Phase Two on the southern side of Venetia Road would be the mitigation area for, for the, the wetland impact in the Phase Two within the development portion of, of the site. So, so there's a, there's a, a wetland area in that rectangular designated area.
Getting rid of that mud puddle.
Correct. Correct.
No offense.
And, and replacing it in the, you know, along the floodplain on the southern side where it's, it's, you know, high, more higher value and function.
So parcel A is currently encumbered by a wetland. You're going to the permitting, right?
Exactly.
That's not parcel A between 20, 143 and 144.
I think it's somewhere right, right along here.
But that's where you're proposing to place it?
Correct.
Correct. So the current wetlands between 143 and 144, we have the dashed rectangle sort of the bottom of the plan there?
That's correct. There, there's an existing wetland on parcel A, which is...
Yeah, I know exactly where that is, yeah.
Yeah. And then on the southern side of Venetia, there's, there's actually an existing wetland.
Right here.
That is just below the, the stormwater facility, and then our proposal was to expand that to, to the west or down, down the...
Yeah, so what, what does that expansion look like? That's, I mean, you're, when you expand that, you're now getting very close to my property right next to it. I'm just wondering, what are your thoughts? How many goose are going to be running around on my parking lot? Like you see with all these types of things. And I'm, it's Phase Two. I don't think there's a whole lot on the drawings about Phase Two.
Correct.
And, you know, if we, if we approve Phase One, then we're going to be looking at Phase Two. And Phase Two affects me in both places, in, in my backyard and in my side yard at my property on Venetia Road.
So just to be clear, I don't believe there's an application for Phase One, Phase Two. This is just application for the entire project?
No, this is for Phase One.
Just for Phase One?
That's what we need clarification from the developer, but the way I'm reviewing it is that, is if it's Phase One.
Just for...
Phase Two would be another approval. We'll come back before a similar...
Yeah, I didn't want to jump on earth.
Okay.
You know, I, I just...
Sure.
I just feel like it's...
No, it is pertinent. Right. Because otherwise, Phase Two, if Phase Two doesn't go through, which I don't, it's so small in comparison to the rest of the project, is rather atypical, actually. small in comparison to the rest of the project, is rather atypical, actually, if you're going to build Phase Two and put in a single loaded road.
Right.
Right? Because you already put in the roads, so you might as well build the homes. So this is really, is it a permitting question in terms of making sure you're permitted? So it's a timing question with your joint permit and your mitigation?
Exactly.
Got it. So there's a required permit through the state, through the Army Corps of Engineers when you impact a wetland? And I think that that process, could you elaborate where that's at right now, the time of that process?
Uh, yeah, we are in to Washington County Conservation District with the NPDES permit. We actually have received our administratively complete, you know, letter from them, so, so we're moving forward with the, the technical review. And then that will include the Chapter 105 or the, or the joint permit application process.
So in plain English, does that mean there's going to be a pond there, or there's going to be elevation changes?
So in, so it's the south of the project, Mr. Schlecker, I don't want to step into your toes, but there'll be a constructed wetland there?
Constructed wetland, yeah.
A constructed wetlands is, what is that? Cattails and...
Mr. Schlecker?
No, it, it, it's generally more, cattails are not a desirable...
It's totally mobile right now, is what I'm saying. I mean, you drive by there right now, except for the mud puddle, most of that property is totally mobile. So it doesn't even hardly get that wet all year round.
What you're calling a mud puddle, the state and the Army Corps...
I get that.
...viable ecological reasons.
Yeah, but I just, I'm asking, are you planning on making that wetlands come closer to right here? Is this going to grow? Is this a footprint for what you're saying is going to be having water retention?
Uh, not water retention, but, but again, a constructed wetland that, that would be, that would be wet during storm events, but...
Well, yeah, it gets wet.
And, and we'll certainly, you know, keep it as far off of your, you know, property...
It's not manicured.
As feasible.
Right.
That's, that's what I'm, I am saying, it's not going to be manicured.
Yeah, that's correct.
I'm saying, if we could talk about this more, there's, I see some ways to taper to Venetia Road and taper into what you're talking about and still not be in the floodplain and clean that corner up. I mean, I didn't own it, so I couldn't clean it up.
Right.
But if it, if you're going to put a, a wet lens, I get it. It's when the creek overflows, it's going to get wet. I mean, I've seen it. In last spring, when we had the big rain, you know, I was high and dry, but I was glad that a, a tree clogged the creek and it got pretty wet down there. I fixed that up and we got on with it, but...
Yeah, we'll, we'll certainly, we'll certainly...
I'd like to...
Work with you and, and, yeah, we, we appreciate your input. I know you're, you're out there every day.
I would like to work with Phase Two behind my house. And the, the other question I have is the sewer outfall. The sewer easement, the sewer easement Lighthouse Partners owns, the sewer easement.
Do we have a depiction of that? I'm not clear exactly what that is, Mr. Mikkels.
It's, it was there.
Oh, was it? I was going to bring the plans right up.
Okay.
It's in the southeast portion of, of the, the southern parcel, if you look at it on your...
Here's the question. This piece, this property line right here is basically my property, all the way to 420 Venetia Road property.
Right.
And I see crossing of the property, and I was wondering why we weren't notified.
No, the, the only, we'd, we'd like to discuss...
I'm good. I, we talked about it briefly in the hallway and we were going to...
Yeah.
I've been waiting to hear from you, so...
Yeah, that, that's, that's more on...
Please let me know.
Yeah, that's more on the developer, that's more from, directly from the developer negotiating that, that matter, but we would like to acquire an easement from you to...
There's probably other ways to do this.
But we have other, other ways to, to sewer the property. We, we do have a design.
I know, when I tried to...
Doesn't require any additional easements.
I tried to pull one toilet down there, you thought we were putting in a whole development.
So what does the current preliminary plan have for sewerage to this property?
Uh, there's an existing easement in the, in the very far southeast corner.
Do you need any private easements to utilize that?
No additional easements.
Well, you're going to have to do considerable upgrade to that. I mean, it's not going to be a six-inch pipe for the whole development.
Correct.
So I'm, there's going to be work though.
Sure.
Just so we're clear, this is the theoretical Phase Two, or are we saying this is also part of Phase One?
Well, the sanitary sewer will be tied in with Phase One.
Is Phase One?
Got it, okay. Absolutely.
That's basically where I'm at.
Yeah, I will let the developer know to, we'd like to, you'd like them to follow up with you.
Yeah.
If you could also provide some examples of what a constructed wetland may look like, that may give you some education as to what that looks like.
Sure.
I mean, in my mind, I see, I mean, I think you guys saw what, what I did with my property and I, I, I think there's some ways to make that property match and still function correctly for the township. Does that become township property at the end of the project?
I believe this is going to be HOA property.
It'll be, no, it'll be HOA, owned and maintained.
I'm going to keep picking this pass off. I'm going to keep knocking it on the floor.
So did you hear his answer?
Yeah, it's HOA, yeah. Well, you guys, you guys know how to get ahold of me.
Right on.
I have some ideas.
Okay. Yeah, could we ask that conversation to happen before we come back in February?
I will pass that message along, sure.
And you can give them your contact info for everything?
Yeah, we have, we, we have each other's information.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mikkels.
All right. Thank you. And just as long as I'm up here on the, the lot, or 112 Wildbrier, with the cul-de-sac, the existing cul-de-sac at the end of Wildbrier, we, we don't, we don't own or control, but we'll work with the township and, you know, indirectly with, with the homeowner to provide whatever's...
I mean, I think the idea is to basically bring it back so that the homeowners' connections are connected to the street just the way they were before the cul-de-sacs were moved to the afterstate. It should still be connected to the street. And the landscaping should make a look as if the cul-de-sac was never there. I mean, that's some grading and some grass, I'm assuming.
Yeah, and, and again, to the extent that we have the right to, to do that work, we want to work with, with the township on that. It, it, it's a private, there's private...
Likely would have been a temporary...
That's right.
It was called, it was called Pepper.
Right. So the question would be is, there's likely a process of the township to make that a permanent pass-through because that's why that was placed there.
Yes.
So Mark, if you could bring that to the next meeting when this is on the agenda, that'd be fantastic.
Yeah.
Yes, sir?
I would, I have a kind of summary that I was using, but I'll name the three things that I was looking to figure. I didn't know if I should give it to you folks or you or...
I'll take it, if you don't mind, unless you have...
Yeah, you're right, and the staff can certainly forward it to me.
I appreciate it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's helpful, thank you.
And then as far as the buffer trees, we, we'll go ahead and add some, you know, evergreens in there.
Great.
Good.
Thank you very much.
You heard what he said there?
Yeah, we'll, we'll go ahead and add some buffer trees.
Oh, okay.
In that, that, it's in that green area. It's, it's open space. I think it's, uh, good for, good for both, good, both sides.
Good.
Any other public comments, sir?
Mr. Schlecker, next to your head there.
Yeah, I'll hang out.
Hello, my name's Preston Hafer, 422 Barren's Court. It's actually my first township meeting, so thanks for allowing me to be here and allowing me to speak. I'm excited to see how the process works. It's very interesting.
Can you say where you are again?
Yes, Preston Hafer, 422 Barren's Court.
Barren's Court, yeah.
Yeah, over in the Hamlet Spring Dell neighborhood, the Benjamin Marcus Homes.
I don't know if they're southern assigned in there or not, like it used to be.
Yes.
It should be up there.
Thanks. Help us do the minutes.
Of course. I do minutes for HOA, so I know how helpful that is. I just had some general questions around the, the Phase One, hoping to see, hear a little bit more about timeline, estimated timeline for the project, and maybe if we could get some more information around potential easements running through the property lines. I know there's easements on the document for the area surrounding the properties, but there's not any direction of easements running actually through the actual property lines. A lot of the other newer neighborhoods being built in Peters have a lot of easements, storm drain easements running directly through property lines, preventing things like additions to the homes, pools, decks being built on the, the backyards of the properties. And it doesn't seem to be anything in the documents already regarding any of those. I was wondering if there's any information that we could get regarding the, the potential additions of those easements while development's being done.
So the, there, there are certain easements that, that are reflected on there for, for storms, sanitary sewer and so forth. And then beyond that, there are, you know, zoning setback requirements that'll be, you know, enforced and adhered to during the, you know, during the each, the home building process for, for each property. But there's, there's no additional easements that are, that are going to, that are to be proposed.
Okay. D 6.0?
Sure.
I think that might answer your question. There are some easements because of the design of the project. Everything's really running down, what we call left to right. And that kind of goes through lots 105, 104, you have storm easements, and between 103 and 102, there's some storm easements. So those kind of run left to right as everything's draining down towards Venetia Road.
Generally, yes.
Generally speaking.
Yeah, more so between the properties rather than running parallel through the backyards of multiple properties.
Correct.
Okay, so there's no plans to put additional storm easements through properties?
Correct.
Okay, I think that's good to hear. Timeline, estimated timeline for the project, real ballpark?
Depending on final approvals and permitting, hopefully, you know, break around this spring or summer.
Okay. Final question, is there any additional information that can be provided around the continuity of the neighborhood and new phases, new communities usually having cluster mailboxes, for example, whereas the existing phase built off of Wildbrier is a legacy neighborhood, does not have any of that newer requirements built into it? Are these new homes going to have a consistent approach to the rest of the neighborhood? Are they going to have the cluster mailboxes, all the, the things that come with new neighborhoods?
Yeah, there's cluster mailbox boxes proposed.
I believe just in one location, I think they're all...
Mark, are you able to show the, some of the conceptions, just to give a feel for what they think the homes might look like?
Sure.
I, I've reviewed it.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, yeah, I've seen them at other similar neighborhoods, especially the, the one in Just About Farms. Is there any current planning for the HOA that, that can be shared? Any ideas of HOA fees, low maintenance, how much?
I, I don't know if, if fees are included in the HOA. Have we submitted a...
I'm not sure if you submitted them yet, but as our final, final approval number, when we sign off, we need to actually have reviewed the HOA documents.
Okay.
I believe at the time they'll have fees in it, but I don't think we have the final documents yet.
Okay. Is it planned to be a normal HOA without maintenance included, or is there plans to include maintenance?
I, I believe all exterior, all maintenance, lawn, lawn snow removal will be, will be included.
Okay.
It's intended to be, sure. Which is typical of Eddie Holmes community, particularly this more upscale.
As a interested potential home builder within the, the new phase, or the new development, I, I would caution to, to those kinds of approaches. I don't know how much is already set in stone, how much has already been decided. There's been a lot of discontent within my neighborhood around the issues that we've had with HOAs and the level of, of features that are included there and the agreements that have been put into place. And again, looking at the existing neighborhood, my in-laws live in that neighborhood and know the reason why we're interested in building within there. There's a lot of continuity already in the existing neighborhood, not having HOAs in parts of the Grape Meadows community and some of the other surrounding areas. I think having more continuity to the existing neighborhoods there would lend better appetite to potential home buyers within this new community rather than trying to mimic some of the other new developments that are being built in other areas of Peters.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I, I think HOAs are, you know, they're, they're here to stay with the, you have stormwater management facilities now.
It's impossible to get rid of the HOAs. But, you know, moving toward the ones that are, you know, less...
Less inclusive.
That can be feedback you take back to your client.
Right.
Of course, that's not a township element in terms of HOA.
Of course.
Any additional comments, sir?
That's all I had. Thank you all for allowing me to participate. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for questions.
Any other public comment? Yes, sir?
Well, sign in, speak ahead.
I am Chris Short, 330 Venetia Road. My, my question is mainly the sanitary, the, the way they have it drawn up right now. You go to drawing D5. So the way they have the sanitary drawn up in the top right corner? You zoom in up here? There's a little note here that says existing sanitary lateral, and my question, is that the line in the house?
Probably, yeah.
So my question is, you're going to tie an eight-inch PVC into the four-inch PVC for my house, sir?
No, that'll be upgraded to, to eight-inch. And, and then without interruption to the surface of your house, and then from the, the new line, the new public line to your house will be maintained as is. It'll just tie in, you know, slightly closer to your house.
Well, I just, my, my general, just understanding the way stuff flows, it looks like it's going to come down and attach at a 90-degree angle to my four-inch line. So when that eight-inch line backs up, it's going to back up my four-inch line, because I'm the lowest point, right?
It, it, it'll be designed not, not to back up. And, and the, and the eight-inch line, and any angles, that's, there'll be a structure there with, you know, kind of a gutter poured and a, and a base of the structure over there. It, it'll be all to, you know, sewer authority standards.
Yeah, I guess as long as it's reviewed by the sanitary, it just seems to me, if I have a four-inch for my house and eight-inch for however many houses that is, I just want to make sure it's going to work.
Yeah, you got, you have an eight-inch line at that turn, at that 90...
Right.
That we're talking about. What's below that eight-inch? Is that, that the main that kind of runs, I guess, along the...
I think the sewer line main is...
Sure. What size is that?
You want to size it?
I, it's pretty big. I'm thinking, I'm thinking maybe like, are they 12, 10 or 12?
It, it all depends. It could be as, as big as 16, but...
Yeah, because I, I know I looked in there and it's really large. There's a lot less water in there than you think.
Yeah, I, I didn't find that out, but...
I can't remember.
I, I understand your concern, sir, and I think that's something we need to look at from a township perspective. Obviously, the sanitary authority will be looking at that as well.
Yeah, I was going to say they, they have to actually improve the hand sign from the plan.
And they'll be looking at hydraulic surcharge to make sure nothing comes up.
Well, that's, I'm just, when I look at it, you're going to come down, you're going to make a right-hand turn 90, then you're going to make a left-hand turn 90. Why wouldn't you just tie in a thing? But that was just one, and the other one is, and hopefully it's just an error on the demo drawing, I think it's D point two, whatever. There's a fence removal, I think they just highlighted it. I just want to, they're not going to remove fence that's not on that property.
Correct.
Okay. If you zoom in, it just shows fence removal like on my property that...
And this particular one?
Yeah. The property line here crosses this fence three times. It crosses here, here, and here, and this whole thing is shown as red as being removed.
I don't think they can demolish anything on your property without expert...
I work for a construction company. You hand them those drawings, they're taking it out.
I hear you, I understand.
That was it.
That is what we need to be revised, of course. Thank you, sir.
No, that's it.
Very good.
Thank you.
Do you have what you need on that note wise?
Got it. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? So, we heard a few things. I'll recap. We talked about the existing turnaround with the temporary cul-de-sac being adjusted and the two drain lines potentially being tied to the municipal sewer. I don't exactly know what the municipal sewer condition is at that location or depth, so that's going to need to be something that's explored by the township and Mr. Schleger. In addition, I think Mr. Schleger noted that additional buffer trees at Lot 121 would be accommodated. Regarding the Wildbrier top coat, I think that's something that's on the township, obviously.
Yeah, that'd be on the township. We have our own road program, paving program. Maybe we could piggyback on their contract for doing their work, but either way, we'll, we'll look at addressing that.
Very good. We talked about the constructed wetlands and what those would look like, but that is a Phase Two item, which is not necessarily before us here today, but this is something that would be beneficial to speak about in more depth at the next meeting. Of course, we talked about the cluster mailbox. The sanitary connection, I think, is one of the more pressing items. We need to make sure that's acceptable, it's not a hydraulic issue. And then, again, just clean up that fence perspective. I need to have two notes for you, largely around the intersection of Carmen Way and Wildbrier Drive. You have some, looks like some traffic calming elements there. Really short curves. I understand the radius meets the township requirement, it's just a little bit offset there. Is that a traffic calming element?
Specifically...
Right there, yeah, we have the 90 degrees from Carmen coming into Wildbrier, that on the right-hand side, that's just a very, it looks a little bit...
Wonky.
Disjointed to me. I understand it meets code, maybe something to look at, suggestion?
Yeah, we definitely added some horizontal, you know, articulation to, to some of those areas for traffic calming purposes, so they are to code.
Right. And it just seems that the segments, the length of the curve, although the radius is adequate, the length is very short, so it gives it that kind of... A bit of a feel, right.
Gotcha.
So, just a suggestion for you, if you're, I think you're going to talk with Mr. Madri on Tuesday, you mentioned. So, those are the comments I had. Any additional comments from the commission?
I think you covered it on the one...
That's a good comment about the intersection, because where cars coming right, cars coming around have to really butt out to get back in line up.
So, they're hitting it twice?
Yes.
Could I ask for some clarification on whether it's from, from the commission or from the homeowner? I understood that the drain pipes, they would just need to be extended. I understand that they daylight.
That's correct.
Yeah. So, they want to tie into...
We really prefer, we do not want them to, into the sewer, because we like...
I understand.
We like to see, we like to see the water coming out, you know, to just...
Let you know they're working.
Let us know it's working, that's correct.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
So long as it's compliant with township.
Basically, it'll be a 15-foot, you know, PVC pipe attached to our current drain and running up to the roof, that's...
So, you just want an extension.
Exactly.
And know that it'll happen.
Just so it's doing the same...
Just to the actually, that's the only pre-construction.
Right.
And then on the sanitary sewer, I mean, we're obviously working with Peters Creek Sanitary Authority on, you know, design drawings and everything, and everything's, again, to their code and to any appropriate township code. Is there something above and beyond?
No, just, I would just make sure that hydraulic calculations are taken into account, given the amount of flow you're going to run down there, and it is a 90. I know it's only about a foot, not even a foot higher, so you're probably matching crowns there or just a little bit higher. So, just might want to look at that, because otherwise, that's just going to be a lot of calls.
Yeah, no, it's, it's very straightforward and to, again, to all required capacity and construction standards.
Understood. During that, may I have a motion?
I will make a motion to table the Woodbrier State Development's final plan with the consent of the, of the applicant.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't believe there's anything left on the agenda?
No.
Very good.
Staff updates.
Any update from staff?
I would just note that the RFP comprehensive plan, for the comprehensive plan update that has been posted in the, on the website, in the newspaper, and on a number of other websites for RFPs. And we have it coded for, it just started this week, Monday.
What's the deadline for the RFP for the...
Submission deadline is February 13th, and we're looking to make a selection sometime in March.
And then approximately, when would that process begin for comprehensive plan? Because I think there's been a lot of community...
Eventually in April.
April, so spring, April.
Started as soon as possible.
Fantastic. So, March, April, comprehensive plan, just be looking out for that. Very good. Meeting adjourned.